All right. I call to order the Gladstone City Council meeting for January 8th, 2019, 6:30 PM. Good evening, everyone, and happy English Toffee Day. I had to come up with a weird one, and I think I ate more than enough for everybody over the holidays, so I'm not going to be celebrating that one. Um, I hope everyone's holidays were wonderful and stress-free. Today, our consent agenda includes approval of the December 11th, 2018 regular meeting minutes, approval of the November bank balances, budget report for period-ending November 30th, 2018, approval of the November check register, legal costs on projects, department head monthly reports for December 2018, and resolution number 1154 updating the master fee schedule to include small cell deployment fees. Items on our regular meeting agenda include item 8, the Gladstone Downtown Revitalization Plan Strategy for Implementation by John Southgate; item number 9, the Reneerson Natural Area Agreement; item number 10, updated Oak Lodge Water Service District, also called the OLWDS; sanitary sewer agreement and ordinance 1494, amendments to the Gladstone Municipal Code, also called the GMC; chapter 13, point 12, point 040, connection fee designation; item number 11 is appointments to city boards, committees, and commissions; and item number 12, city council liaison appointments. Tammy, could you please call the roll?
Counselor Neese?
Present.
Counselor Tracy?
Present.
Counselor Reisner?
Here.
Counselor Mercero?
Here.
Mayor Stempel?
Here. Could everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any agenda additions or corrections?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Well, so the first item on our agenda is the swearing-in of the new city council. And I just wanted to say something really quick, how things have changed so tremendously in two years. When I was the mayor-elect, I was not allowed to talk to staff. I was not allowed to be looped in on any of the council's, not decisions, but considerations going on at the time. Wasn't involved at all until pretty much the moment I was sworn in. Now, we've had our new councillor-elects that have been looped in from almost the day after they were elected. Staff has reached out and asked to help in the transition any way that they can, and they've also, well, we, most of us, as well as they, have attended an elected official's training. So, it's, I'm so thrilled that we've given them the tools that they need to at least be able to sit up here and feel confident and hit the ground running. So, could the three, could councillor Tracy Todd and councillor Randy Ripley come up? And councillor-elect Matt Tracy come up and be sworn in?
(inaudible) Raise your right hand and retreat after me. I state your name. You solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Oregon and the Charter and Municipal Code of the City of Gladstone and that I will, to the best of my ability, perform the duties of city councillor for the City of Gladstone, Oregon during my entire term and my self-helping job. Okay, please.
I see you need to sign. Sign, sign! Sign, sign!
Welcome.
You're not getting away without signing.
Yeah, we're not gonna let you sneak off too fast. Once we got ya.
Okay. Yes, please, I want them seated and...
Yep.
You bet.
Please.
Just a sheet. So, we've got it all signed, it's all good? It works off. Okay. Yeah, okay.
Come on, boy.
Oh, four. Sure. So, these, this is their... Okay. I started saying, "Are you gonna come join us?"
Yeah, go ahead. So, we do sit up here.
But we can change things up.
Sit up, well, these shirts look more comfortable than that.
You're not quite there yet. You're not quite there yet.
No, no, why put this up?
So, you got your drawer.
Ooh, a drawer. Impressed, aren't you? Oh, no. Ooh, drawer. That's cute.
I don't like it.
Okay.
She's right over there.
Oh, okay.
Don't push it, but... Okay, that's my grandson.
Oh, is it?
Yeah. No, no.
I, Ken Stempel, we solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Oregon and the Charter and the Charter and Municipal Code of the City of Gladstone and that I will, to the best of my ability, perform the duties of Mayor for the City of Gladstone, Oregon during my entire term and my self-helping job.
They're gonna touch the ground. We'll get that one signed, we'll get it. That one's signed, okay. Tracy? You have to go down here again.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I'll be turned off.
They'll be waiting for ya.
My feet are dangling in half.
You have a name tag on front of your seat, don't you?
I'm not sure if you all take photos, families and... Yeah. There's a police chief, there's a...
There you go.
How are ya?
I'm well.
Yeah, that's cool.
Well, nice.
That's cool. Awesome.
Thank you. Um, next item is our interim police chief swearing-in. I'd like to introduce our interim police chief, Kim Yamashita.
Mayor Council, I'd like to introduce from the back of the room is Chief Mish Lachey and Captain Shilah Nelson from Flapper from Camus.
I know.
Then there's Officer Jordan Yamashita from Tiger, my nephew, and my husband Wayne.
I, Kim Yamashita, you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Oregon and the Charter and the Charter and Municipal Code of the City of Gladstone and that I will, to the best of my ability, perform the duties of Mayor for the City of Gladstone, Oregon during my entire term and my self-helping job.
Cool. Thank you. Thank you again. Per our city charter section 4 council, it states the following in section 18. President of the council, at its first meeting after this charter takes effect and thereafter, at its first meeting of each odd number year, the council shall elect by ballot a president from its membership. Upon the mayor's absence from a council meeting, the president shall preside. Whenever the mayor is unable to perform the functions of the office, the president shall act as mayor. So, we're at the point where we need to elect a council president.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to nominate councillor Matt Tracy.
All right. Would you accept that?
I would accept the nomination. Thank you very much, councillor Reisner.
Any other nominations? All right, Tammy, could you please call roll?
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Neese?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Rickyus.
Counselor Reisner?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Mercero?
Yes.
Mayor Stempel?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Awesome. All right.
I only did two meetings. Nope.
Oh, it's not so hard.
Thanks for that.
All right. Where are we? First is, we're going to have a presentation on the state of homelessness in Clackamas County by Vaheed Brown of the Clackamas County Health, Housing, and Human Services. And I just wanted to say thank you because, over the holidays, a very dire situation came to my attention. Ninety-two-year-old woman and her son kicked out of their home because the owner decided to move back into town. They were living out of a storage unit by day and their car at night, and their medical bills were taking up pretty much everything that they had. Because they didn't have a home, he couldn't get caregivers' payments. So, thankfully, I was able to contact their group, and they, now they have a path forward for these folks. So, thank you very, very much.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Stempel, for bringing that situation to our attention so that we could take care of that family.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Stempel and city council people, staff, for inviting me tonight to speak about the state of housing affordability and homelessness in Clackamas County. I have a lot of information to share, so I'm kind of gonna go through it, just jump right in and start talking about some of the somber numbers. The situation that was brought to our attention by the mayor with respect to the elderly woman and her middle-aged son is a situation that comes across my desk multiple times a day, and there is far more need of that type in the county than we have the capacity to provide resources. So, the picture is somewhat bleak when it comes to the City of Gladstone itself. I think that when I get to the numbers there, we'll see that the picture is sobering but potentially manageable. It's something that, I think, when we look at the numbers that come from the City of Gladstone specifically, it occurs to me that with some concerted effort, homelessness in Gladstone could be ended in a near term. So, I'm gonna jump right in. What I'd like to do is kind of talk through a continuum of the situation with respect to housing affordability and homelessness, beginning with people who are without shelter entirely, and kind of move up the spectrum. This is sort of our spectrum of housing from, and the little white boxes are areas of intervention that the county and our partners are engaged in to try to move people out of homelessness and into permanent housing, from shelter and transitional programming to public housing and subsidized housing, up to you get out of the green area of folks that are of very low income into the market. And so, I'm gonna talk about the numbers from the streets, and then some of the challenges driving folks out of their housing and creating the crisis that we're in today. When I talk about the numbers of houseless people or homeless people in the county, I'm gonna draw from these sources. Every other year, the housing and urban development requires that each county in the United States receives federal dollars for homeless services, conducts a point-in-time count, it's one night in January. This year, it'll be on the 23rd, I think. And we have volunteers, hundreds of volunteers throughout the county at sites where people who may be experiencing housing instability or homelessness can be contacted, counted, surveyed, and we learn every other year how we're doing this way. It's not a census, because we don't count everyone. Not everyone comes to the food bank that day, for example. So, it's an undercount, but it allows us, because we do it the same way every other year, to kind of track trends. So, it's more like a poll than it is a census. We also have a more, what is more like a census is our Coordinated Housing Access Program. That's one number that anyone in the county who's experiencing a housing crisis, or is about to lose their housing, or is living on the street, they call us, and that number, that one coordinated line connects them to every resource we have available. There are seventeen upfront off-ramps where we, if someone has a relatively small challenge, they just need a deposit in the first month of rent, where we can get them off, you know, off-ramp them right away and take care of that challenge. If it's a more challenging situation that requires some case management and maybe longer-term support, then we, they go to the, into the waitlists in the Coordinated Housing Access System, which has twenty-one programs that are primarily HUD-funded or federally funded that we operate through what's called the Continuum of Care. So, the Coordinated Housing Access Line, we can look at that and say, "How many people are on the waitlist right now?" And that tells us, in a better sense, in a more long-term sense, what our real numbers of need are. I'm also gonna talk a little bit about some information from the school liaisons. All the school districts have homeless student school liaisons, which keep track of students in the school system that don't have housing, provide for transportation, and kind of look after them, and give us some numbers. And then in 2016, I conducted a survey of the Springwater Corridor Trail, and I'm gonna share a little bit of information from that. So, from the point-in-time count, in 2017, we don't have 2019's numbers, because we haven't done it yet, there were 2,293 individuals counted. Seven hundred and forty-six of those were unsheltered, meaning they were not living doubled up, they weren't staying in any kind of placement for human habitation. They were living in a tent, under a bridge, in a car. Hundred and fifty-seven were housed in short-term or transitional shelter, more than half of them, right? One thousand two hundred and ninety-five are, were unstably housed, including nine hundred and ten children, and eighty-five of them are veterans. When we looked at the Clackamas County Children's Commission Head Start Programs, Head Start Programs are free preschool for children aged three to five who, because, who are low-income and qualify for Head Start. We found that in our Head Start Programs across the county, sixty-five percent of the students in Head Start in Clackamas County are homeless. That is a sixty-five percent increase over the previous year. So, we're seeing a lot of homeless kids and homeless students and school-age children in households who themselves do not have adequate housing. And a number of them were unaccompanied children. The Gladstone Head Start Program had thirty-three homeless children. Trends from the point-in-time count looking at 2015 and 2017 in comparison, there was a fifty-four percent increase in the unsheltered, right? That number of people who don't live in a placement for human habitation. That's a remarkable increase over a two-year period. A thirty-five percent increase in the number of homeless children, a forty-three percent increase in chronically homeless people, and a fifteen percent increase in veterans experiencing homeless. Chronically homeless is defined by HUD, by Housing and Urban Development, as someone who has spent a year continuously previously without shelter, or more than three episodes of homelessness in the last three years, and has a disabling condition. That's the definition for chronically homeless. When we conduct the point-in-time count, we ask people a lot of questions, including about causes that, causes for their homelessness, causes for the loss of housing, reasons they are currently homeless. It's a check-all that apply, so people can say that there were multiple causes for their loss of housing, but the ones that are by far the most common are economic drivers. So, people say that they were unable to afford rent, or they didn't have employment. And you can see that those are significantly more frequently cited as causes of homelessness than any other factor. Eviction is the next, and then kicked out by family or friends, that's a very common cause of homelessness for unaccompanied youth and children. Criminal history, domestic violence, mental, emotional health issues, these are all going down. Well, under two hundred people identified those causes, while well over four hundred people identified an inability to afford rent or a lack of employment. When we look at the Coordinated Housing Access Line, again, that's the number that people call, and they're either given immediate help to end their homelessness, or save their housing if they're facing an imminent loss of housing, or they are put on a waitlist for our twenty-one programs to assist them. We currently have 1,258 households on those waitlists, which represent 2,369 individual people. So, households, of course, some of those households are single individuals, many of them are, you know, a family. And so, of all of the folks that are currently on our CHAW, waiting for us to help them, that's 2,369 people. So, that number is very similar to the point-in-time count, which was 2,293, but again, there are people that don't know about our programs, haven't called us, and are out in the community without housing right now. So, that also is an undercount. It's still a significant number of people in the community. The Springwater Corridor Trail Survey, I'm not gonna go into a lot of depth, this is a lot of text for the slide, but I asked folks, it was an opportunity to get a much richer picture of what people are experiencing and what was causing their homelessness and this kind of thing. Some of the trends that stood out, so the Springwater Corridor Trail, I'm sure you're familiar with, is a multi-use path that runs through five jurisdictions. I conducted these surveys near this Clackamas Service Center, so primarily within Clackamas County. I surveyed about a quarter of all people that were estimated at that time to be camping on the trail, and of those that I surveyed, I surveyed a hundred and twenty-eight people. Eighty-three percent had lived in Oregon for ten years or more. Eighty-seven percent have been, were chronically homeless, they were homeless for more than a year. Eighty-five percent said they had no, they had no connection to a case manager, or someone connecting them to get, helping them get into housing. More than, the majority of them said if they had access to such help, they would seek it and accept it. So, there's, there was a lack of connection to folks that were living outside. And since I conducted the survey, we've done, we've begun to do targeted outreach in that community to get people connected. Most people lived with others when they were homeless, they were with kind of street family. Again, the top factors cited as contributors to their homelessness were job loss and eviction. And the top barriers to housing, so when I asked them, "What's causing you right now to not be able to get back into housing?", were named lack of money and unemployment. And when women were asked about their causes for homelessness, domestic violence was named as the fourth most common factor. Seventy-eight percent of those who cited that were women. The majority of women report violence and harassment, while a minority of men report such experiences while homeless. So, those are the numbers of the people in the community and some of the factors contributing to their homelessness. I'm gonna talk a little bit about some of our housing programs, what we're able to muster to kind of address this crisis, and then speak to some of the gaps. So, identify what kind of programs are able to do what, and then how many people are still on waitlists for those kinds of services. So, we have no emergency shelter in Clackamas County. We have emergency warming shelters in the winter when it's very cold. We have some, a very small amount of emergency shelter for people fleeing domestic violence and for families, for children who are homeless. But for the general population, for adults, for single individuals, we do not have any emergency shelter in the county. Domestic violence housing and shelter, we have seventy-one beds. Interim housing, that's three to six months of housing to stabilize families and try to get them into permanent housing, there's nine of those. We have forty-eight units of transitional housing, that's up to two years. Again, it's with case management attached to try to address people's economic barriers. Rapid rehousing, that says 133 beds, it's not really beds, it's funds and caseworkers that have the capacity to move 133 households rapidly from homelessness into housing. And that might mean a short hotel stay, addressing their barriers, and then finding them an apartment that they can afford, sometimes with a subsidy. Permanent supportive housing, there's 323 units. That's deeply subsidized housing, long-term, for which people with complex needs have support attached to them for the duration of their stay in that housing, often for the entirety of their lives. So, of all types, we have 569 beds. And then, when we kind of think about the gap, so our inventory versus the need, of the 2,369 people waiting for placement and 569 total program beds, and more than half of those are permanent supportive housing units, 323, which rarely open up, and I'll talk about why. We have 401 non-chronic adult-only households, that's single individuals, adults, who are living outside, but have not been living outside for more than a year, and do not have a disabling condition, right? So, that's a very large number of our unhoused population. We only have five program units that can meet that need. We have 255 family households waiting for 99 units in our programming, and 115 youth waiting for 31 beds. So, that gives you a sense of the gap. Drill down a little bit. Permanent supportive housing is deeply subsidized housing with intensive and ongoing supportive services, often for the lifetime of the tenant. These are people with severe disabilities, mental health challenges, no capacity to ever earn any income, so there are people in our community who will always need support, and often, and they will be in that permanent supportive housing unit until they pass away. And that means that permanent supportive housing has a very low turnover rate of our, you know, of our inventory. So, we have 605 people, or 450 households, on the waitlist for that, for permanent supportive housing, or PSH. Only thirty-five new placements were made into permanent supportive housing in 2017. Seventeen of those were new programs, so they weren't like someone moved out and a new family moved in. Seventeen of those were new units. So, that means that at the current rate, if we had no one else call who needed permanent supportive housing, and we only focused on the 450 households that are currently in our system, it would take us 22 years to place all of those people. And again, these are people with severe challenges, often complex health challenges. So, permanent supportive housing is a top priority for the county in terms of expanding our capacity. Wanted to look a little bit at Gladstone. There's a gap there. Okay, well, it didn't make it into the file that I sent you, but I have a paper copy, which is handy. I looked at the numbers of people that called into the Coordinated Housing Access Line from the City of Gladstone. Since we opened that housing access line in January of 2015, 316 households, or an estimated 950 individuals from the City of Gladstone, called our Coordinated Housing Access Line and met preliminary eligibility requirements. That means they were about to become homeless, they were literally homeless, they were chronically homeless, they were living in a car. Right now, there are 23 households, that represents about 70 individuals, from the City of Gladstone who are currently on Coordinated Housing Access waitlists. Six of those households are chronically homeless, right? They've been outside for more than a year, they have a disabling condition. Six are literally homeless but not chronic, and 11, at the time they made it onto our waitlist, were facing imminent homelessness. So, you have 23 households in the City of Gladstone that need assistance, that need some kind of subsidy and support, or access to affordable housing, some folks to help them with their barriers. When you think of... When you think of, you know, I've worked on housing and homelessness in the Portland Metropolitan Region for many years, and when I think of a community that cares about this issue, and the scope and scale of the folks who are currently needing urgent assistance is twenty-three households, that's kind of good news. That sounds to me like something that could be an achievable goal to address. But two hundred and seventeen households in our Coordinated Housing Access did not list location. Some of those, I don't know how many of them, could be from Gladstone. And one thousand one hundred and thirty-eight households right now are on our waitlists. So of the one thousand one hundred and thirty-eight people on the CHAW waitlist from Clackamas County, twenty-three of those households are from the city of Gladstone. That's about two percent. So why are people unhoused? I'm going to talk about some of the factors with respect to housing affordability. And housing affordability and inability to afford housing is without question, and based on the data, the primary reason we have so many people without housing in our community. We know that addiction and mental health issues are contributors to people's lack of ability to maintain permanent housing, but when we look nationally at communities that have much higher rates of addiction and substance use disorder, much higher rates of mental health illness, but not high rates of housing, of high housing costs, we don't see high numbers of homelessness. For West Virginia, for example, has very low numbers of homelessness, it's declined historically over the last decades. They have much higher rates of substance use disorders and addiction than we do in Clackamas County or Oregon more broadly. They don't have a housing affordability crisis. What we have is very high rents that are increasing more quickly than wages, and a housing market that is very hot, and it's very difficult to maintain housing if you are someone who doesn't make a very good income. And that is the primary reason we have these kinds of trends, these increasing numbers. Just some definitions. AMI is area median income, and this is AMI for Clackamas County, not for Gladstone specifically. When we're talking about low-income families, that's people that make eighty percent of area median income or less. Very low income is fifty percent of area median income or less, and extremely low income is thirty percent of area median income or less. And housing is affordable when it costs a third, or thirty percent of your income, for rent and utilities. So if you, regardless of what you make, if you spend thirty percent of your income on your housing costs, that housing is affordable to you. If you spend more than fifty percent, then you are housing cost burdened, or rent burdened, or extremely rent burdened if you pay more than fifty percent. And I think you, the city of Gladstone is a rent-burdened community.
Yes.
You had this forum recently to
Yep.
...talk about that, which means more than a quarter of your residents who rent, spend more than half of their income on their housing costs.
I think it was thirty-some percent.
It's very high in Gladstone, yeah.
Thirty-two percent.
Thirty-two percent.
Thirty-two percent. You're not the only rent-burdened community in Clackamas County, but you're one of several. Milwaukee as well, Oregon City. So looking at some general housing statistics for Clackamas County, there's about a hundred and fifty thousand households total in the county. The average household size is two and a half people, average family size is three. Our area median income is seventy-three thousand two hundred and sixty dollars for a household of three. That's the median, that's one hundred percent of median. Low income, or eighty percent, is fifty-eight thousand six hundred. Lower income, or sixty percent, is forty-three thousand nine eighty. Very low income is a family of three that makes thirty-six thousand dollars a year, thirty-six sixty. And extremely low income is families of three that makes about twenty-two thousand dollars or less a year. Now, the average two-bedroom rent is fourteen hundred dollars in Clackamas County. That is not affordable for pretty much anyone not making a hundred percent or more of area median income. And the median income means there's, half of the households make less than that, half of the households make more than that. So at least half of our households are struggling with their housing, and I'll kind of show you some numbers. If you're at thirty percent or less of area median income, your monthly affordable housing budget is five hundred and four dollars. And I don't know of many units in our county that can accommodate a family of three where the rent is five hundred and four dollars.
You got that right.
I don't know of any that aren't programs that we administer, right? If you make sixty percent of area median income, your affordable housing budget is nine hundred and ninety-three dollars. If you make eighty percent of area median income, your affordable housing budget is one thousand three hundred and twenty dollars a month. Now, a two-bedroom unit, which you would assume a three-person family needs, is fourteen hundred dollars a month in Clackamas County. So no one making up to eighty percent of area median income, given our current rental market, can find affordable housing in Clackamas County. They're rent-burdened, or they're living in their car, or a hotel, or on the street. That's the reality. And we're talking about folks who like, adults who live on a social security income. That's under thirty percent of area median income, that's only sixteen thousand dollars a year. A full-time minimum wage worker makes nineteen thousand dollars a year. That's less than thirty percent of area median income. Their affordable monthly housing cost is less than five hundred dollars. So if you've got a family of three, the head of household has a minimum wage, full-time job, that family is not able to afford housing in Clackamas County. When we look at thirty to sixty percent of area median income, we're talking about library assistants, office specialists, two people with full-time minimum wage jobs. Again, their affordable monthly housing budget is five hundred to a thousand dollars. And at sixty to eighty percent of area median income, you're talking about a case manager, like folks that work in my organization, an accountant, and their affordable housing monthly costs are between one thousand and thirteen hundred. Again, their incomes are falling short of what housing costs in the county. So it's hurting to keep, paying the rent. A little bit about public housing. We have, the Housing Authority of Clackamas County operates five hundred and eighty-two units of housing that the Housing Authority owns, it's our housing. We work with partnering nonprofits that manage another four hundred and twenty units, and we administer sixteen hundred and eighty housing vouchers. So that's, those vouchers are financial support, rental assistance, basically, for people who would go out in the private market and find housing in the community using that rental assistance voucher. When we look at the waitlist, the Housing Authority in 2017 opened the public housing waitlist to new applicants. Seven thousand eight hundred and ninety-two households applied. Three thousand five hundred were added to the waitlist, that's an up-to-ten-year waitlist. Eighty-one percent of them are extremely low-income families. Again, that means they make less than twenty-one thousand dollars a year if they're a family of three. Ninety-one percent were non-elderly, and thirty-two percent were disabled heads of households. Some more about the shortage of affordability with respect to housing in the county. For every hundred families with extremely low income, there's only nineteen affordable units available, so that gives you a sense of, that's, of that trend of fifty-four percent increase in the number of people who are homeless without shelter over a two-year period. You know, if there's a hundred families on the market looking for nineteen units, then a lot of people are going to fall out of housing entirely, and that's what we're seeing. So we have in the county an estimated six thousand three hundred and eighty-five units needed to meet the need. One out of four of all renters are paying more than fifty percent of their income in rent in Clackamas County, so we are a rent-burdened county. Two out of three renters with extremely low incomes are paying more than fifty percent of their income in rent. So folks who have a minimum wage income, folks who are living on social security or disability income, two-thirds of those households are extremely rent-burdened. I'm going to skip this one, this is basically another illustration of, you have this information in your slides, but this is an illustration of the mismatch of the need to the availability of affordable housing. This graph shows the rates of increase in apartment rents versus renter incomes from 2006 to 2015. You see that renters' incomes increased thirty-nine percent over that nine-year period, but the rate of rent increase was sixty-three percent. So that's kind of the story in a nutshell. The costs of housing are increasing much more rapidly and at a steeper rate than the increases in the standard of living for the members of our community.
Just one moment, it's not in your packet. We got it today, we're going to make you copies of the presentation.
Okay. Thank you. All right. And I'll make sure that you have a copy of the Gladstone-specific data, somehow it was missing from this presentation, but I'll make sure it's in the file.
Thank you.
Turning a little bit to homeownership, it's also very difficult for people who aren't very well off in Clackamas County to move into homeownership. And there's a number of reasons why. One is, you know, the average home sale price in 2017 in Clackamas County was four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. It's the average sale price in 2017. That's up six point eight percent from 2016. You look at area median income, if you make a hundred percent of area median income, that's, you know, close to eighty thousand dollars for a family of three. An affordable home, new home, is a home for three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. That's over a hundred thousand dollars less than the average sale price of homes in the county. If you're a teacher, that's, you know, an affordable house to you is under three hundred thousand dollars. If you're a construction laborer, an affordable home would be under two hundred thousand dollars. There's just not a lot of homes on the market that are available at those prices. Clackamas County ranks number one out of all counties in the state of Oregon for the highest median home value. We have a median home value of three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. So home prices, home values in Clackamas County are higher than they are in any other county in the state. A little bit about things that we're doing at the county, at Health Housing and Human Services, to address the gap, just really briefly. We have a Housing Affordability and Homelessness Task Course, it's meeting now, and through the summer of this year. We are identifying and kind of coming up with recommendations as a task force. It includes representation from city councils, from the school districts, from law enforcement, from nonprofits, from the hospital system, from architects, realtors, landlords, and tenant advocates, and so on. It's a big task force, it's being charged with recommending to the county specific recommendations that the county can commit to in terms of goals for new housing units and policies to address homelessness, and to also recommend that the county identify new revenue sources to address this issue. Those meetings are the third Wednesday of every month at the county campus in Oregon City, from six to eight-thirty PM, and the public is welcome. We also have a new Affordable Housing and Services Fund. Last year, the Board of County Commissioners committed one point two million dollars from the general fund annually, so that'll be renewed annually, to address these issues, including the development and preservation of affordable housing, safety off-the-streets initiatives, things like emergency shelters, or tiny house villages, that kind of thing, resident and homeless services. We got sixteen applications this year, and we'll be putting, awarding those monies out at the end of January. So that's a welcome increase in our resources to address this, and this is new. This is the first time we'll be awarding money to these programs. We're also conducting a frequent user service engagement analysis, or a FUSE analysis, and this is funded through the Affordable Housing and Services Fund. What a FUSE analysis is, is a data collaboration with law enforcement, the emergency departments in the hospital systems, and homeless services, to identify the most, the highest utilizers of emergency services, of the most expensive type, who are also homeless. So people who are very frequently in the ER, or in an ambulance, who are very frequently being arrested by deputies or municipal police officers, and who are also homeless. And then we're going to kind of identify the top hundred of these individuals, look at the systems that they are touching, and quantify the costs of their unmet housing needs. So if someone is housed and is connected with health insurance, they don't need to go to an emergency department for every medical need, they have a primary care physician, right? If you're homeless, that's not necessarily the case. And a lot of kind of crisis management is going to be done with police involvement, which would not be the case if you were housed, and so on. And so what we'd like to do is to quantify the costs of the unmet housing needs of the people who most utilize emergency services, and then commit as a county to redirecting some of those resources to provide housing for that same group of individuals. That's one of our current initiatives. The voters of the metro region also passed this November, the Metro Affordable Housing Bond, which was a six hundred and fifty-eight million-dollar bond that was on the ballot. Clackamas County gets about twenty-one percent of that money. Our target is eight hundred and twelve units over seven years, so we're beginning implementation work on that money, which will start coming out into the community in March. And we've already begun kind of community engagement work, reaching out to our cities and partners throughout the county, and we'll be doing a lot more of that in the coming months. So that's another welcome, new source of revenue, or new revenue for us to address the problem. The Housing Authority is also redeveloping four hundred units of public housing, at a redevelopment target of a four-to-one replacement. So we have the oldest public housing in the state of Oregon, some of the oldest public housing in the United States. One of our large parks, it's a hundred-unit park in Oregon City, was built in nineteen thirty-one, and it's on land that is now quite valuable. And so one of the strategies the Housing Authority is doing is redeveloping, so building new public housing, using some of the revenue from the land value of our existing public housing, which we're going to redevelop and sell some of that real estate, to build new units for those same families, but at a four-to-one replacement rate. So of those four hundred units that we're currently in redevelopment plans, we're intending to produce sixteen hundred units. So it's a quadrupling of that housing stock. And that's ongoing in Milwaukee and Oregon City. We also have recently some of our projects that are in the pipeline. Rosewood Terrace, a two hundred and twelve unit of affordable housing, which will be online December 2020. Pleasant Avenue is a twenty-four-unit project for veterans who are homeless, that's in Oregon City. That'll be online now, probably January 2020. We had some slowdowns with housing and urban development and the shutdown, and that's kind of put a snag in that process. The Veterans Village, the Clackamas County Veterans Village, opened earlier this year, or actually late last year, and that's a fifteen-unit transitional pod village for houseless veterans, veterans who are living on the streets, they get to live in this village, community, have onsite case management to rapidly move them into permanent housing. We've already had five individuals in, I guess, three and a half months now, move from that village into permanent housing, so that's very exciting. And we're, you know, we're reaching out to our cities and sharing the information, and looking to identify partnerships across the county to address the crisis. And I very appreciate Mayor Stempel, the outreach that you've done to us, not just with that family, but with the spirit that you came to us, with hoping to look for solutions. So thank you very much.
Yep, absolutely. So as you mentioned, because of House Bill 4006, we've been designated as a severely rent-burdened community, so that means that we have to come up with solutions. I think that, when do the stakeholders' meetings start?
We're scheduling that for late January, and the first thing is, we're participating with the county in the housing needs analysis to identify areas in Gladstone specifically where we might be able to do some code changes in regards to redevelopment and help with affordable housing. That's on our list to do for this next year. And I think a lot of you remember too, what happened before the holidays, when you had an issue come before you regarding emergency ordinance for a warming center. And the outcome of that meeting was pretty much, we need to understand what the homeless issue is
Yes.
...in Clackamas County, and that's why we followed up with Fahid. He wanted to provide you some information. I know there are some folks here that would like to speak tonight, and I think that we've been publicly honest that there is no movement with that church to move forward with a warming center. They're not, at this point, interested in applying for a conditional use permit. But I think that if they would like to have some questions answered with Fahid and us here tonight, that would be a good opportunity.
Okay. Do any of you have any questions? Okay, I believe we do have some people in the audience.
Great.
Jennifer Ashby.
Don't go far.
Okay.
Thank you, Council. I currently live on Petite Court, right off of Glen Echo, and I am absolutely not unsympathetic to the homeless situation regarding the homeless center, excuse me, the warming, proposed warming center that was going in. I can literally see the church from my living room window, and in regards to the homeless situation, there is not a good answer, and it's a very, very difficult situation. I work in Portland, I see it every day, I work right off Northeast Broadway, and it's very upsetting to see these people down and out. But I think my concern is safety, safety to our neighborhoods. I feel us as neighbors, we're, we keep an eye on each other and respect each other. There was an incident last night that a gentleman tried to break into our house at one-thirty-four in the morning. The camera... Um, the cameras that my husband and I put up, because of the proposed warming center that the Hillside Church had initially proposed, and I understand it's off the table, um, we put up cameras. And when my husband checked the cameras this morning at eight o'clock, a guy had, um, I'm pretty rattled, I'm sorry, I'm still rattled from this morning, um, had shook, shook our, our doorknobs. And, um, then this morning, like I said, after we checked the cameras, my husband and I went out to check to see if our cars had been broken into, seeing on the cameras that this guy had come in, and he was in our car. He was sleeping in our car. And, um, we had to call nine one one and have this guy removed, um, clearly homeless, and had to be taken away, and it was really, really scary. Um, there is a case number and a report. I have footage of the video. Um, but these are my concerns. When, when these people are brought into these neighborhoods, what does that mean for the safety of us? What does that mean for our neighborhood? You know, are we going to be picking up trash and needles and feces? Um, it was really, really scary. And us as a neighborhood, we're prepared to fight for that. We, we don't want this center brought into our neighborhood. And like I said, there's, there's no easy answer to the homeless situation. And I understand there's a lot of good people out there trying to help, but safety is the key here. And I, for the first time, I, I've moved to Gladstone, out of Portland. I moved here in twenty fifteen. I've never felt unsafe in my home. And for the first time, I was scared. I was really scared. And I don't know if this guy's going to be back tonight. You know, my husband's teaching a class. I have to go home tonight, and, and I don't know if this homeless guy will be back. I don't know. So, I just ask for major consideration on what these solutions are to these issues, um, because I, I don't feel safe in my home. And I would love if there was a church across the street, but a warming center busing people in from Portland. This is what I deal with every day anyway. And to have to deal with this this morning. My husband was home. He was home. He was just getting ready to leave for work. I open the car door, and this guy's in the back of my car. That's not okay. And I just ask that there's consideration in the safety of our neighborhoods and the integration of what we all work hard for. We work hard. We, we work full-time. And, um, to feel unsafe is not okay. So I'm just asking that you consider that as well, and, um, whatever the solution may be. But I, I don't feel safe. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So the conversation is on homelessness. The warming shelter is kind of a separate conversation? And it sounds to me like that is off the table, and if it does come back on the table, there will be public notice, and there will be public hearings to discuss the issue.
Correct. If, if the church decides to apply for a conditional use permit, they will have to notify all of the surrounding neighbors. There will be a public hearing before the planning commission. Again, Fahid and I have talked to the pastor. He has no intent of doing that this year. Um, so I appreciate the concerns. I continue to update neighbors as they call in. But this presentation really was about informing people about what the current state of homelessness is in Gladstone.
Yes. Anybody else?
Two more.
Okay. But again, this is on the presentation on homelessness. The warming shelter is a separate conversation.
Doug Hall.
Good evening, Senator Council.
Good evening.
I'll be very brief, since we're not going to talk about the, uh, emergency homeless shelter. But again, I'll start off as I did in November of thirteenth, and speak to you and say, I don't envy any of your positions. Difficult, difficult decisions face our community. How do we treat the homeless differently without discrimination based upon their records? I, I know someone, I've known him for twenty-eight years, and they refuse to rehabilitate. This person I speak of is a male. He's been a heroin addict for twenty-eight years that I've known him, for twenty-eight years. And he refuses to comply with any rules and regulations. And he'll bounce from Clackamas Town Center Promenade with his brown sign to McLaughlin Boulevard on Roethy Road, and he buys heroin. And he just hasn't overdosed yet. How do we bring in the type of person or persons that Tamara's speaking about? The woman with a child that's homeless? Those are the people that I would welcome into my community and cry a tear with them, and I'd want to help them. But do you think I want to help that fellow I've known for twenty-eight years? I don't even want to see him again. And I run into him by driving my car and looking at him and going, "Don't ever call my number." I'm thinking, "Don't ever call my number. I can't help you." And you folks, without discriminating, have to help the ones that really need it. And how do we? My recommendation is for those single people, the gentleman here in the plaid shirt that was speaking, can we keep those hardcore homeless in an industrial area? In, like a, a, a big warehouse type thing? You know, not into our communities. Is there a way? Is there a way that you folks can do this and screen them? Screen them so we don't have to bring them into the neighborhood? These are things that I hope you'll go home and think about. So that these violent people with a violent past, that are drug users and extreme alcoholics that will not change and will not rescind the way that they live, are not into our community. But the, the women, the battered women, and the elderly, and the Vietnam veterans that fought hard and had their brains scrambled so much from what happened to them? I, I, I went to school with those Vietnam vets, and I know some of them have the best intentions, and their brain is scrambled. So what do you, I don't know how, how we're going to solve this, but I hope that all of you will, in private meetings, talk about a solution without bringing the hardcore drug users to our community, please.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Next, Ellen Burns.
I appreciate, uh, Mayor Stempel, you talking about the situation that you encountered, because I, uh, would like to talk about these people, uh, the people that I encounter. I serve on the, um, Aging Services Advisory Council for the county. I, uh, my church, I'm on the Social Justice Committee. I serve on Metropolitan Alliance for Common Good for Clackamas County, looking at houseless issues. And I'm a volunteer with the Sheltering Our Neighbor the Sun program. Um, I'm also, have participated two years ago and will participate this month in the homeless count in Clackamas County. Uh, so I have met these people. I have stayed overnight with these people. Um, these people are, uh, like the woman from my church who lived in, uh, who's eighty-five years old, lived in her apartment for twenty years. Uh, the, the person who owned the building died. His son inherited it. He raised her rent three hundred dollars a month. She lives on social security. Um, how, what does an eighty-five-year-old do? How do you get a job, uh, when you're eighty-five years old, to make three hundred extra dollars a month so that you can pay, uh, that? No, you have to cut back on your medications, on your food, whatever, an extra three hundred dollars a month when you're living on social security? Um, the, the family that, um, both, uh, parents worked, they had, they have two boys. Um, they, uh, the woman became ill. She missed work. She lost her job. Uh, they, so they didn't have that income. They, they owned their own home, but they couldn't make the, they couldn't make the payments with her hospital bills and her not working. So with their two, uh, little boys, they lost their home. Uh, the night that I met them, the man had just gotten paid, and he had gone and paid the bill for, uh, the storage unit, because everything they owned was in the storage unit. What are you going to do with everything that you own from a house if, if you lose your house? I mean, if you sell all of that at a very cheap price, probably, um, then you get another housing situation, then you'll need that kind of, those kinds of things again. Um, the, the little boys, they were trying to keep them in the same school, um, but instead they were in the sun program. So that means two weeks in one church, move two weeks to another church, move two weeks to another church, um, uh, the churches that, uh, are in that program. Uh, it's great, they have a roof over their head, but it's a very unstable way to live. Um, a, a woman who lost her home because, uh, the day that I met her, she was preparing to go to testify in court against, um, her husband, who had beaten her very severely and thrown her down the stairs. She had her mother and her two children. One of them, um, uh, had autism, and, uh, he, they lost their apartment. And so they, um, they were trying to, to make do. Um, so, you know, these, these stories, they're, then there's, everybody has a story. They're, they're just heartrending, and we need to find a solution for this. The county, I, I give great credit to the county commissioners who are working very hard on this. Um, the work that we're doing, uh, Mac G., uh, we worked with the zoning commission to allow people in unincorporated churches and other nonprofits and unincorporated, uh, Clackamas County, to allow people to live in their cars on their property. I say, I'm ashamed to say that I worked very hard for two years so that people can live in their car in the parking lot of my church.
The time's up, and I hate to do that, so.
That's it, that's all I wanted to say. So, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you very, very much.
I believe there was, there was one more person that filled out to have two separate public comments, but one did mention the warming center. Is that correct? We might want to see if they still wanted to talk or not, so.
Glenn Riss.
Okay, 'cause like, like I mentioned earlier, this is the homeless discussion. If it's the warming center, maybe at the end in business from the audience might be more appropriate. Okay.
Commissioners and citizens of the, of the city, um, yeah, the, the, the homing, the homeless thing has been talked over well. And I think that, uh, Mr. Brown did a great job of presenting what the county's doing. Um, I'd like to, I guess, make a, a comment and a thing. What I hear, what I've heard, you hear on the news and everything, is the effects of homelessness and what we need to do to solve the effects. We need to find them a home. We need to find them food. We need to find them clothing. Very little is spoken about the root cause. What is the real cause of all of this? It's econ, and he mentioned two things, both having to do with economics. You guys have, ha, can affect our economics, um, through taxes and through regulation. And I would suggest to you that in your suggest, in your, um, uh, discussions, that those things be addressed as well. Because unless we, um, we as a community, as a nation, um, solve the problems of income versus expense, then it's, it's only going to get worse. So that, I'll, I'll, uh, I'll end it there. We've heard enough about that. My other, my other concern is, is way different than that. I live on, on, um, Glen Echo, sixty-five ten. Uh, we've been there for nearly thirty years. And I've watched the condition of the streets, and particularly our street. Glen Echo has been a, a very well-maintained, uh, in very good condition, street for most of that time, until recently. And, um, in, in part of my, uh, experience as an engineer, I've done road building and I've done road bed building. And what's happening is that road is being overloaded. And it's being overloaded by eighteen-wheelers who are using that as a shortcut between, um, McLaughlin and the freeway.
Okay, that's not anything to do with the homeless?
No, I said this is a second subject.
Okay, 'cause that would be during business from the audience, 'cause right now we're just talking about the homelessness.
Only?
Pres, yes.
Okay. So I guess, may I ask one question then? How do I address this?
That would be, uh, most likely, I would get a hold of Public Works.
Okay.
And.
You guys.
He just stepped out, so, yeah.
Okay.
Jim Wyatt is the Public Works Director.
I, back, back to the home, to, to the warming shelter. I, I have met with the, um, pastor, I guess he would talk. And, and we're planning to get together and talk about what we, as a community who are complaining about this can do to help them.
Wonderful.
And I know that there's, uh, there's activities through the Rotary Club and through the Clackamas Service Center that are doing that. So I will contact.
It's definitely a community discussion. It's not something that just one person's going to solve.
That's right.
Yeah, thank you.
But you guys can affect some of the other stuff.
Thank you.
As, as we all smile. For sure.
Anybody else?
Let me bring Fahid back up for a couple of quick questions.
Yes, we also have a representative from the school board. I don't know if you have any comments on it, 'cause I know it's an issue that's impacting the school district tremendously. If you would like, or not.
Please.
I'm putting you on the spot. The front, not the tall.
Well, just, um, the, talking, maybe from the, the school perspective, and that's tricky, 'cause I, I'm not prepared to speak on behalf of the school. But, um, certainly there's the, the individual family human cost that, that you spoke about and that we're, we're talking about. I think, um, for the rest of the community, I don't, I don't know about you all and you all, but I, I felt like schools is a big part of Gladstone. It's why I bought a house here and live here with my family. Um, the, the housing cost is driving people out of the schools, and as families leave because they can't afford it and the kids go with them, the funding for schools is collapsing, and all these things are tied together. So you can look and see victims, you know, people that are suffering very directly. But I, I would say to our community, we, even if we're the lucky ones, we're suffering indirectly, 'cause it's affecting us in ways, I, I hear the people who, who see, uh, people they'd rather not see and who are afraid, and that, yes, I, I hear you. But also, everything about our town is a little bit under threat as well, just because people can't afford to live here, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes.
So Fahid thinks, a lot of data hacked into very, you know, short presentation. Thank you for making it short, I appreciate it. Um, you said you've been working on this issue, um, for quite a while in the region.
Mm-hmm.
So, quite a while is fifteen years, twenty years, ten?
No, I mean, yes, I mean, as a, um, uh, someone who's been engaged in, um, advocacy and direct service on the street, I've been doing that since I was a teenager.
Okay. So, would you say this is the worst that you've seen historically in the region?
Yeah.
Okay. So this whole issue to me reminds me of Christmas Vacation, where Clark hands Russ the ball of, you know, the Christmas lights.
Mm-hmm.
Says here, "Fix this."
Right, mm-hmm.
That's how this feels, because there are so many different factors and variables that are part of this.
Yep.
You, um, mentioned a number, I think it was two seventy-one or two sixty-seven, for the eviction rate or eviction numbers. Did you guys do any tied correlation back to, um, market pricing on the apartments, enforced evictions? Or did, was it simply, were you evicted, or?
Yeah.
How did you become homeless? I was evicted.
Yes, mm-hmm, yep.
So we don't know if there's a correlated market.
Right.
Um, driver there. Is that correct, or?
No, we, not, not with respect to the point in time.
Not for the pit, right?
Yeah, not for pit, yeah.
So that, that's one of the things that I think, one of the things we're missing in our city and in many cities, is that this is a problem created by some other folks who are not having to fix this problem, quite frankly, in a lot of ways.
That's right, yep.
All right? So we're going to work, I think, with the county pretty directly on some of the things that we want to do for affordable housing here. But as you know, we're, our hands are kind of tied too. We're in a landlocked, little community that doesn't have a lot of available land inventory for, for doing some of the things that you want to do. I'm hoping that with the mayor in, in Clackamas County, that we're going to work pretty closely together so that we can come up with some of these ideas, the cottage clusters, A D U's, infill A D U's.
Yep.
Um, maintaining those market rates or below-market rate rents. Um, you know, and then we need to start. You know, and then we need to start driving folks to understand that you can profit on the long-term, it doesn't have to necessarily be a dash grab, short-term profit, and then in five or six, seven years.
Right.
I hope this doesn't happen, we hit another recession, and then everybody just walks away from their properties. Well, we'll have a lot of affordable housing at that point, right?
Right.
I mean, that's an economic model, right?
Yep.
So, I guess, that and the stats that you've given us, it's just, there's a lot to unpack. How would you, Clackamas County, you want to come to Gladstone, or work with Gladstone and the other cities in the county, to be able to put together a task force of some sort, and I know there are a few.
Mm-hmm.
I know that former Oregon City Mayor Fowler is.
Yep.
Involved in some of these things. We really need to get a lot of folks in the room.
Absolutely.
Metro, with Lynn Peterson as the new president, and the other new councilors are very motivated, Christine is ready to do this, I think, and talk about it as well. Is that being shaped up at the county, then?
Yes.
Yep.
In a larger task force, okay.
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, you've given us so much information to unpack, and it's just, you know.
Overwhelming.
Well, and part two is, at your February twelfth meeting, Clackamas County's going to come back and talk about the status of the Affordable Housing Bond that passed.
Right.
And how those dollars are going to be distributed. So, this was to talk about what's the issue, and now, next month, we're going to talk about some potential solutions with partnering with Clackamas County.
And I'll stop, but I did contact Jill.
Great.
About a resident, a longtime resident of Gladstone, who is in need, and I was very, very surprised and happy to find that she, her response was, get him up here, get him into med, get him into the other services he needs, we will at least start him off in the process. But these are individuals who are wandering around with little or no hope, and they don't seem to know where those resources are, because he was interested enough into asking about the resources.
Yep, and that's what I found when I went into the Springwater Corridor Trail, eighty-five percent of the people I talked to had no idea how to get access to services.
Okay.
And the vast majority of them wanted them.
And to me, that's a community outreach.
Yep.
Issue, right? So, we need to get out there and do that. And some of these folks who are talking about volunteering and wanting to be part of this, I encourage them, let's all step up, twos and threes, we go out and we do the walk, and we talk to folks who are in need.
Yep.
And get them those services, at least get them started, if it's even carpoolsing it up to Carnes Road, or what have you, right?
And there's a couple of things I'll, just to mention, I mean, I participated with some other county staff in Oregon City, Milwaukee, in the last couple of years, on task forces that are similar to what you're talking about. The Housing Affordability Work in Milwaukee was, you know, a great group of staff and electeds and folks from the county, came together, came up with a package of recommendations to that city council, and they're now doing a number of things. Oregon City did an Equitable Housing, Affordable Housing Task Force, that also kind of looked at zoning, and how you can, you know, address zoning and SDCs and that kind of thing, to incentivize affordable housing development. Oregon City also has a homeless liaison officer, that, you know, does a lot of that, connecting people to services, that's a model that I think is really interesting. I know the city of Portland is now trying to hire one.
Yeah, I heard about that.
You know, Officer Day in Oregon City is a, he's a police officer who does social work, and it's phenomenal.
Does outreach.
I mean, he does amazing work. We also are just now starting a program in partnership with the Sheriff's Department and the District Attorney's Office, called Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion, or LEED, and that's going to be along Ninety-Nine and the Eighty-Second Corridor, so that's going to be in Gladstone, and that's going to be two caseworkers are going to be doing outreach. The basis of LEED is fundamentally, a deputy, sheriff's deputy encounters an individual in the community who's in possession of a controlled substance, but otherwise is not engaged in other criminal behavior, and can say, you know what, I can take you to Oregon City and put you in the jail again, like I have fifteen times, or I can not arrest you and divert this meeting to introduce you to a caseworker, who's going to follow up with you within thirty days, if you make that follow-up meeting, your arrest goes away, and you stay in LEED until you get your stuff figured out. And we have two caseworkers that are engaged in that, and they're going to be out in the community. So, there are going to be new people that haven't been out walking around, doing that work. But you're right, it's incredibly complex knot of problems, that, like one of your citizens said, you know, there's these upstream economics, that, you know, those are driving people out of their homes, those are driving families out of the community that have schoolchildren. That's challenging, those are huge economics, you know, that's not something that necessarily city councils can do or deal with.
Right.
But when we think about folks having to move on to smaller communities and more distant communities because of the housing costs, we can think about tenant protections, and what can we do as municipalities to keep people in the communities they live in? And those are some levers that you have some push and pull on.
Thank you for your response.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, thank you very, very much, and we will continue to have these conversations, because honestly, I think the statistics are worse than what you've shown here.
You're right.
I think a lot of people are too proud to admit that they're in need.
Yep.
Or they just don't understand where the resources are, so, yeah.
Yep.
I appreciate the efforts that you've definitely put out, and all the facts that you presented, even though they're not positive ones, so to speak. There's one question I wrote down, how much would it cost to eliminate homelessness in Gladstone? I'm going to think about that for a while.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and I think that the average cost per door, per unit of affordable housing development in the Portland metro region is about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars per unit. You multiply twenty-three households by a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, plus some money for services, and then you have a sense of the scope of the cost there. It's not an astronomical sum.
High.
It's high, yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other staff comments on this one?
No, thank you, Mayor.
All right, so, before we start, I'd like to say a few words regarding the city council. I think the first, most important limitation is that as we sit here, we are representing the citizens of Gladstone, not our own personal agendas and beliefs. There are so many times when a decision being made doesn't align with what we would like personally, but have made a decision based on what is best for the city as a whole. That doesn't mean our personal beliefs have changed, just that the city's needs were more important. As we discuss and consider matters, there are laws and rules we have to use as the basis of our decisions. These start at the federal, state level, then filter down to our city's comprehensive plan, city charter, codes, and ordinances. We do not have the luxury of randomly making decisions, but instead, we have to be consistent and take a path that is defensible. And I want you all to know that we appreciate the time that you've taken out of your busy lives to be here, and I would like all of you to respect the desires of others to hear what's going on, so please keep your side discussions at a minimum, or take them outside, if you'd like, and please make sure that your phones are turned off. My goal is to keep this meeting respectful and engaging, and I hope all of you can help us do that, thank you. So, the first item is the consent agenda, any discussion? Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move that we go ahead and approve the consent agenda as stands.
Motion was made by Councilor Tracy, and seconded by Councilor Neese, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda passed. Any correspondence?
I have none, thank you.
All right, first item on our regular agenda is number eight, Gladstone Downtown Revitalization Plan, Strategy for Immediate Implementation, by John Southgate.
And John thought all those people here tonight were for him.
[laughing] I'm the big fan club, I just.
I know.
I actually suggested if there's other items, if you want to.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Happy to wait. But I'll launch. So, Mayor Stepple, members of council, Jackie, everyone else, thank you for the opportunity coming for you tonight. As some of you know, but I'm not sure all of you know, I was retained by the city to assist the city in charting a course for downtown revitalization focused mainly in Portland Avenue and the properties along Portland Avenue. And so, I've spent the last several months working on this document, if you're not familiar, and I know there's a couple of new members, if you're not familiar with this document, I encourage you to read it, it's on the city's website, I'm sure Jackie has a bunch of copies at her home, at her.
Yes, in my car.
In your car.
Yeah.
Good reading material. So, and I, not to talk about myself, but my background, I was with the Portland Development Commission, before that with the Bureau of Planning in Portland, and then my final public sector position was the City of Hillsborough in Economic Development, where my focus was on downtown revitalization. So, this is sort of my background, it's also my passion. I'm a lifelong Oregonian, I love Oregon's towns and commercial districts, whether, you know, in urban Portland or Gladstone, I've worked in places like Talent and Lincoln City, and all over the place. I have a great job. So, I wanted to try to summarize my report to you, which I assume you all got a copy of, and, but I also want to engage with you, entertain your questions, do my best to answer them. And so, I'd almost rather be conversational, I want to make a few remarks, just sort of some high points, but I'd rather compare notes, answer questions you may have, if you want to go down any rabbit trails, I'm happy to do that. And I'm assuming I have about ten minutes of presentation, and, so, I'll just launch then with my findings. These are based, by the way, on a series of interviews, both with private developers who have worked in Clackamas County and nearby, some property owners along Portland Avenue, I had the pleasure of meeting with, and I've also spoken with public officials at Metro, at the state, with Clackamas County, and the purpose of these interviews is to talk to people who are decision-makers, are in a position to influence decisions, or are experts in potential funding sources. I want to get their take, sort of to complement or confirm ground truth, my perceptions of downtown Gladstone. So, I want to start with a really positive message, is Gladstone, I think, is in a really great position. I'm really excited about what the future holds for you. I will not attempt to predict exactly what it looks like, no one could predict that, but it's clear to me, in talking to developers, as well as public sector officials, that there's, I'd say, a unanimous recognition that Portland Avenue, downtown Gladstone, could really be a great place. And that's not to take away from what it is now, but I think it has potential to be a lot more. Some of the reasons for that, the city, Portland Avenue has great bones, and if you look at any older commercial district, whether it's downtown Hillsborough, where I worked a few years ago, or Division Street in Portland, or Mississippi, or Main Street in Oregon City, you have a lot of the same elements. You also have some unique assets, you have that river right at the foot of Portland Avenue, which, boy, when I was in City of Hillsborough, if you had given me a river like that at the foot of Main Street, I would say, okay, great, we're done, that's all I need. You have great old neighborhoods close by, you have a variety of commercial services, you're also, I believe, in the path of growth, which, there's a bit of a threat to that, you've got to be careful how you grow, but you look at what's happening, for instance, in Milwaukee, and in Oregon City, there's a lot going on, there's a lot of new investment. This region, whether you like it or not, is growing, someone told me a hundred and twenty-five people a day move to the Portland region, that's a lot of people. They have to be housed somewhere. Oregon City, just across that beautiful river, four hundred units are going to be built in a couple phases in the Cove Project. Someday, something's going to happen, the Blue Heron site. Milwaukee, downtown Milwaukee, has several great mixed-use projects, three and four-story, some on city-owned properties, some just purely privately developed. All of these elements, you have great access, between McLaughlin and two oh five, this is an easy place to get to. And I think it's going to be, I suspect it already is, an appealing place for millennials, for the talent, who are looking for a more reasonable-priced place. Buying a house in Eastmoreland, or inner southeast Portland, it starts at six or seven hundred thousand dollars. You could buy a great old bungalow in Gladstone, I think that's one other factor. I'll also note, you have challenges. The street in its current condition is, it's not an attractive street, it's, I think it's too busy, it's missing an opportunity, that's how I should put it, for wider sidewalks, trees, traditional ornamental lighting, I think it'd be a really great streetscape experience. One of the things, by the way, I noted here in my set of recommendations, is I would love to take you all on a tour of places that I think could be interesting examples. The one that comes to mind when I think of that street is in Kenton, in North Portland, a neighborhood not unlike the areas around downtown Gladstone. They took the old Denver Avenue, and they put in, it's a much more pleasant, beautiful street, it's more walkable, more accessible, and I think that the private investment is following course. Judicious, wise, public investment can leverage more private investment, which is what this plan calls for, and by the way, I think this is a great plan, I had nothing to do with it, this was done about a year ago. I will also say, and I'm trying to condense my sixteen pages into eight minutes, downtown revitalization is not easy, it's not for the faint of heart, you have to make choices, you have to be intentional, it's going to cost money. I mean, in Hillsborough, we've done some projects, we formed an urban renewal area, and with those dollars, we revitalized the old Venetian Theater, and then we also partnered with a private developer, one of the developers I spoke with, by the way, about downtown Gladstone, and who really likes it, but that was a public-private partnership. So, whether it's making sure your development codes are aligned with your vision, or having financial tools to help partner with the private sector, tools that will pay for themselves over time, as new tax proceeds come in from that new development, those are the sort of things you need to look at. A couple of the elements in this plan that I think are particularly exciting, and that, again, every developer I spoke with shared my enthusiasm for, are the Portland Avenue streetscape improvements, as I alluded to, and then also the Trolley Bridge. If and when those are going to be built, I'll say, when they are built.
When, yes, when.
When, all right, thank you. I think they're going to be game changers. I'm trying to think, you know, downtown Portland, the city made a decision decades ago to take Harbor Drive, to tear out this, basically, a freeway right next to the river, which is a really smart place for a freeway, and replace it with a waterfront park. I think the Trolley Bridge and the streetscape improvements, I think those will do the same thing, I think they will jumpstart development here in Gladstone. And I think you have about thirty million dollars sitting in your hip pockets waiting to be spent, is that correct?
Yes, around that.
Okay.
No, no, we don't.
I know I make Jackie nervous, every time I talk about money, but.
I thought, are you donating?
Yeah, no.
Yeah, we have, private anonymous donor, I wish, we don't. However, there are dollars in this region. Metro has two major funding sources that are going to be put on the table in the next couple of years, and in fact, this is an incredibly perfect timing for us to be having this discussion, and for you to be grappling with where you want to head with your downtown. There's the regional flexible funds, which are on a regular cycle, I think it's every, I can't remember, it's two or four years. Metro is a matter of a few weeks away from starting to think about how, what the process is going to be, what the criteria is going to be for the expenditure of those funds. I've talked with Metro staff, I've also talked to transportation staff at Clackamas County, so you have partners who are standing in the wings, waiting to have those conversations with the city. There's also the 2020 Transportation Package, which Metro is contemplating spring, the original genesis of that was how to pay for the new proposed Southwest Corridor, the next max line to Walton via Barbara Boulevard. But they're looking at not just that, and not just a few freeway interchanges, which they've been looking at for a while, but they're looking at a much more aggressive package. So, I think you're in a great position. Again, I want to try to be, get to the essence here, I think the key, since you're not going to be able to go tell Metro or Clackamas County, hey, look, we have several million dollars to match the cost of the bridge, which I know you don't have, but there are things you could do to demonstrate that you are a good partner, that don't involve lots of money, and I think those are on the policy, on the policy side of things. I mean, I was intrigued hearing the conversation a few minutes ago about affordable housing, and looking at cottage clusters, or looking at the various options to create a broader range of housing to serve a broader range of incomes, that would be an important signal to Metro, that we get it, we're trying to be a good partner to this region. Another thing that you can do, and is called for in this plan, is your downtown development code is, in some respects, not aligned with your vision. I can't remember the exact maximum density allowed in your downtown in mixed-use development, but it's far short of two or three stories of housing over ground-floor retail. I think, basically, the current code prohibits that kind of development. And it's not insurmountable, we actually had the exact same situation in Hillsborough when I started working there, we had a density cap of about thirty units an acre, we changed it to ninety units an acre, which allowed that fourth main project, which I'd love to take any and all, you know, some Saturday we could get in a bus, or something like that, Matt could drive, since he's the president of the council.
[laughing].
We could all get in the back of your truck.
On a sunny afternoon.
On a sunny January afternoon. I want to, I guess where I want to leave it is, yes, you don't have a lot of money. Most jurisdictions I work in face constrained, you know, no one ever has enough money to do everything they want to do, and I certainly get that with Gladstone, and you also have an issue of staff capacity. And you also have an issue of staff capacity. I will say, too, everyone who I spoke with who knows Jackie spoke, not to embarrass you too much, but spoke very well of Jackie. And I'm not just saying that because she's a fellow duck. You have good leadership here in the city, but you can't ask her to do everything. She can't work 80 hours a week. So one of the things we talked about is, and I, it was sort of a late idea, so it was, I may have not gotten the text exactly right, I may have not fixed it everywhere, but I think you should look at, one of the things I was asked to look at is your community promotions, business development fee. I don't even cite a number, because I'll probably get it wrong, but I think there are sufficient funds to hire a limited-duration, part-time staff to help move the dial on these things, so that, I think that person should work closely with Metro and Clackamas County on teeing Gladstone up to qualify, to be eligible for some of these transportation dollars, working with Metro staff on the affordable housing issue, either he or she, or with maybe some, the state has money to look at development codes, so maybe you can get some money from them to do the development. You have to decide to do these things. But I think, you know, forming, or looking at trying to curate a Main Street organization. My impression, and Councilor Nice may know better than me, but my impression is there's not a real strong downtown Main Street organization right now.
No, no.
And I think you need that. And you can't force it, you know, it has to be, I think, ground up, but at least to have someone who's sort of working those relationships, making space available, going out and getting the coffee and the donuts for the meeting on Tuesday morning at 7:30, you know, all that kind of stuff. Trying to, and it has to have relevance. Here's what we're trying to do in Gladstone. You, as a merchant, or you, as a property owner, should be involved in this, and maybe even write a little membership check, because we're going to enhance business in downtown Gladstone. I've thrown a lot at you. I feel like the fellow from Clackamas County Housing, it's sort of a brain dump. And so I kind of want to stop and take a breath, but also, I really want to entertain your questions, and so.
Well, I know that we're going to have a ton of questions, and this conversation needs to continue. So do we have a date in the future where we want to get together and have a work session?
So actually, and I just want to summarize, the downtown revitalization plan was adopted last year. And out of that, we said, "What do we immediately need to implement out of that plan?" And John, that's what he's saying, is, "Here's what we think you should do next." Him and I agree on these recommendations, by the way.
This is the 14 or so?
Yes, yes. I mean, the short answer to your question is, I would like to talk to you about this at your strategic plan, because I think we have some solutions in regards to bringing on some immediate help.
Okay.
And to further that conversation, Estacada needs an economic development person, and may be interested in job sharing, if we could do part-time, part-time.
Okay.
So we have solutions for that. We just wanted you to have a copy of what John is recommending, and then at our strategic planning session in January 26th, I would like to let you know what I think the immediate next step should be now that John's presented this as well.
Okay.
It is an incredible opportunity. Gladstone has never had community development services.
No, we haven't.
Well, back in the day with Jonathan Block, that was what he was hired to do, originally, back 30-plus years ago.
That changed.
Well, yeah.
Right away.
Because of, you know, budgets and this and that.
You know, and I think we are very pleased with the senior planning services that we're getting from Clackamas County. Economic development is different. And you need somebody that has those partnerships and connections, and can bird dog money for the city getting some of these projects done. And I think that's what, I'm going to come to you and propose that we use some of these funds for, is to get some help that can start applying for these grants that we need. And quite honestly, we need to upgrade our code and our comp plan, and that needs to be the immediate.
Yeah. I have a question. When is the Trolley Bridge feasibility study expected to be completed?
In 2019.
Okay.
It'll be kicking off in the first of February, but I believe they have the year to get that complete.
Okay.
Question I have, and my apologies, I didn't get a chance to, I read through this, this is awesome, by the way.
Correct.
A lot of great ideas, but it brings up a few concerns. And I didn't get a chance to grab the budget. So the business development funds, that's coming from the business licenses, correct? So about how much money do we have in that?
And I think part of, this is the last step in that conversation, because we've been, we charge for business license revenue, and I will tell you right now, you currently have about $150,000 in this budget. If we don't use it, we'll roll it over to the next, and we do that through our budget process. So we do have funds available to get some assistance now, and not go through the budget cycle and allocate funds for that. You did make some changes in your business license fee schedule, so next year, the revenue's projected to go down about $40,000, so we need to be cognizant of how much money is coming in to that line item.
And that was designated for this kind of activity?
Absolutely.
Right, okay. And the reason I bring that up is, I've gotten a few calls, and I think Counselor Tracy will appreciate this, from some people up on the Hill, saying, you know, "Why is the city council looking at something like this when we've got Public Works up patching pipes and all that?"
Different funds.
Well, I understand that. But I feel I need to bring that up, because, you know, we, over the last several years, have spent several hundred thousand dollars on master plans for sewer, for water, stormwater, and asked about, you know, "When are we going to move on those?" And the answer is, well, we don't have really the staff to do that. And I'm just a little leery of pushing this forward while those are still sitting on the back burner.
And I think that's why we need to talk at the strategic planning session, because we're going to say, "Here's your options, here's what it's going to cost," and we have to come to a consensus on what those priorities are for the community. But part of this journey we've been on is identifying, how should we be spending these revenues that we're receiving for the business license fees? And this is what John is saying, is you need to hire somebody with expertise in economic development to help you leverage for more dollars and get some of these projects done. But our code is in dire need of an upgrade first.
I think the developers I talked with would agree, that they'd say, "That's the first thing. It's going to take a while to get the bridge built. You're not going to build that in the next year, but you can fix your code in the next year." And then that gives them the certainty and assurance that, "Okay, the code will allow what I want to build, and what I see called for in this plan."
So we did apply for the code help with the state?
That's for the housing analysis piece of that.
That's just for that. So we did not go for a general smart growth?
That's correct.
Okay, but we need to do that.
And so I think that these are the things that I'd like to see rise to the top for the council as priorities, because I can work 80 hours a week, I may not be effective, but I really think that there is so much potential and opportunity here, like John says, that if we could get some help in leveraging and applying for these funds that are available, I think we can get a lot done.
So I appreciate Counselor Reisner's take on this, and yes, I agree with you. But I also understand that we have, if you go down Portland Avenue, John and you and I spent today talking and discussing this, if you look at the properties there, and I'm going to go out on a limb, and I'm going to use the word blight, because frankly, that's the way some property owners have treated that property. To me, it's really, it is private property, right? And people have the right to deal with what they will, to a certain degree, but we're looking at valuations here that would drive revenue into the city. You build up on your values, you build up on your Main Streets. It's funny, you mentioned Kenton. That was my last home prior to coming to Gladstone three years ago. They ran into the same issues. But also, what happened, and we'd have to figure out how to control this at some point in our history going forward, you know, some of the most wonderful old family businesses were pushed right out of Kenton in less than a year after the major development over the last year and a half, or two years, or three years that I've been gone. I think what we need to do is look at building the valuation of the city as well, and build up the revenue, because then we can tackle some of these things that we're talking about, like homelessness, and being able to work on affordable housing issues. But what I'm seeing, though, and I'm hearing, is that that bridge is kind of something that we're relying on. And a question for you is, when is the Cove actually going to go into development? When are they going to put shovel to the ground for Phase Two? Do you know, or?
I'm not sure anyone could definitively answer that question. I mean-
It's still kind of up in the air. I mean, I've seen a couple designed charrettes. It looks pretty amazing.
I believe they've negotiated the terms of the city, so that the risk factors they've removed, but, you know, they're, I don't really know, but they have to get bids, they have to, you know, construct pricing.
And it doesn't matter. So what I'm afraid of, though, is that we get into this kind of perpetual cycle of going forward, thinking we're going forward when we're not, when we miss an opportunity with linking ourselves to the Cove, let's say, in three or four years, right?
Yes, I think that's realistic.
And linking our downtown to the Cove. We do have a bridge that goes across the river. We have never capitalized, to the best of my knowledge, of being able to really turn that route, that loop route, into something now that those developments are in place, or when they're finally in place.
Plus Blue Heron, plus the locks, plus West Lynn.
West Lynn, I mean, we are caught, to your point, we are caught right in the middle. And to Counselor Reisner's point, we have a lot of other work to do. But I think this is another one of those things where we're going to have to really branch out and be visionary about it. Because the valuations of the properties, and the revenue that can be driven back to the city, giving, you know, new affordable housing, new housing stock in the city, plus all of the retail, it's a win. Now, my other question to you, though, is, I looked through the report, and I won't go over the notes I've made, are there developers-
It's all highlighted.
It's more yellow than just white.
Lots of tabs.
Holy cow. I want to be thorough. You know, these developers that you mentioned, are there developers who are now working within the market, understanding the higher building costs now, who might actually be looking at that financial future as things start to slow down a little bit? And is that the time for us to possibly jump into development? Let's say, two years, three years? And I know it's a crystal ball, but are there developers in this region, to your, with your background and your knowledge, who will still develop even in a softer market? Or will they just run away from it altogether, because they're not going to want to take the risk on the upside?
Well, we'll see how deep of a recession it is. You know, if it's really severe, it's going to be really tough to get financing. I think that, because Gladstone is an untapped market, I think you're not as, you know, if I were, if I owned some property on Division Street, there's like 20 mixed-use developments in the last five years. It's really taken off. And if the economy starts to slow down, I'd be a little bit nervous about overbuild, but I would have a monopoly if I built in Gladstone.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to say, is, this is like that moment where you'd be able to build it, and if you could carry for a bit, I'm just asking if there are some players like that out there in the market.
That's what hap, actually, Hillsborough, the fourth main project, he built it, we were coming out of the recession, but he had a unique product, so I don't think, he didn't have to look at what's going on in Orinco or whatever, the supposed competition, because, again, he had a monopoly. The other thing I'll observe is that, one thing that could be counter cyclical is affordable housing built by nonprofits. And you want to have market rate, you want to have for-profit development, which is going to generate taxes, to your earlier point. But nonprofit could be an important component of your strategy. The first two major buildings in the Pearl District, believe it or not, were both built by Housing Authority Portland. They're, but one was 158 units, and one was 198. And then, you know, other stuff happened. And I say that because lest you're concerned that, "Gosh, if we have affordable housing, it's going to create a stigma." It didn't create a stigma in the Pearl District. And they could be a counter cyclical developer. You wouldn't want them to be the dominant player, but, you know, and the other thing I'll say, back to the guy that built that fourth main, he said, "John, you get me a property in downtown Gladstone, you bet I'm interested." And I heard that consistently. And it really kind of jazzed me, because, you know, I believe my own, I drink my own Kool-Aid, but I, these are developers, and these guys, I've talked to them about other opportunities and say, "Boy, John, I don't see it." Well, no one said that here.
The other thing I'd close with is, I've been reading the Cornelius Downtown Development Plan, or the City Core, City Center Development Plan. It's fascinating, because I think when I look at Cornelius, they have kind of a similar, not the same, but a similar kind of problem. And they've actually kick-started part of it.
Right.
But they're in a stall, they're trying to really get through the rest of it. I mean, they have the, you know, Highway Eight or TD highway going through there, they don't have a lot, other than the agri-community, they've got, you know, very interesting demographic, and they're trying to develop that downtown core, which is really not a downtown core.
It's a highway.
And we've heard people say, "It's kind of the same about our town center," and we don't agree.
The thing where I really would, so I work in Talon, I mentioned that, Southern Oregon. Talon and Phoenix are right next to each other. Most of you have probably been down there, just north of Ashland. And it's really instructive, the difference between those two cities is about the same size. In Phoenix, their Main Street is a highway, state highway couplet. In Talon, it's a block off of 99. It makes all the difference, because little downtown Talon, it's, things are starting to bubble up. And in Phoenix, last I went, which has been a year, but it's still-
Car lots and barber shops.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's like-
But I agree with you, I'm sorry, about taking the, you know, opportunity, in that, you know, hopefully in two years, two and a half years, we're going to have a library here.
Right, right.
To, you know, to use, I don't say as an anchor, but at least as-
Spring board.
Right, yeah.
I think there's some-
I'm not saying, you know, I just-
I heard your point, I agree.
Thank you, I see.
All right, well, it sounds like we're going to discuss this further, and thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Great, good luck.
Thank you, John.
All right, next item on the agenda is number nine, Rainierston Natural Area Agreement. Staff? Finally, David. Finally.
Thank you. Well, in the realm of exciting projects, here's one that's actually kind of coming to a conclusion, and I think one that we all hoped would sort of arrive when you started. So maybe for just the benefit of the new councilors, just a very kind of brief background, in 20, late 2013, I guess the agreement was officially signed in early 2014, the city partnered with a private company to have some rehabilitation work done in the Rainierston Creek area. And this project is actually tied to the larger Portland Harbor Superfund project. So it's a, basically, one of the options for folks that have responsibility for some of that contamination, is they can buy what are called credits. And those credits are tied to projects like this, where private money goes in, takes an area that is in need of some restoration, restores it, and then responsible parties, people that contributed to the pollution, in addition to other things they may have to do, can buy these credits that go to refund the work that was done on restoration projects. So the city partnered with a firm to do that, and as I understand, the work itself is largely complete at this point. I think you're going to have a, you know, an official sort of ribbon-cutting kickoff ceremony at some point in the near future. But one of the things that the city agreed to do back in 2014 was, once all that restoration work was complete, was to put restrictions on the property as to how, really, probably a better way to put it, as to how it couldn't be developed in the future. And these restrictions are, I think, very sort of predictable, there's nothing really surprising here. You know, going forward, you can't use it as a mining operation going forward, you can't build buildings in the area, all of the things that I think were fully expected on the back end of this. The trustees for the Superfund project have worked with the restoration developer, and they do have the CCNRs, basically, that's really what it amounts to, that are required to be implemented on the property before those credits can start to be sold. So what I did tonight, one discussion that we had was, you know, since the city's already agreed to do this, why is it coming back to council? And the reason for that is really to give authorization to Jackie to sign it, because when you're making restrictions on property that the city owns, I just want to be sure that there's no, you know, argument going forward that, you know, Jackie just signing that without council authorization, you know, wasn't authorized, and therefore is not effective. So, but that's sort of the gist of what's before you tonight with respect to this agenda item. I do also have in the memo, just a, and it's really not germane to what you're doing tonight, but an outline of sort of, "Okay, well, when this part's done, and they can start selling credits, then what happens?" I think importantly for the new councilors, the city is going to, if the credits sell as well as the developers think they will, we'll see a return of some of the profits, so to speak. They've- think they will, we'll see a return of some of the profits, so to speak. They, the city put in very little money, relatively speaking, into the project, but if things go according to plan, we'll get a decent chunk of money, sharing that with the restoration developer on the back end, so.
Bobby Prouse, who is with Falling Springs LLC, would like to come either in late February, early March, to do a ribbon-cutting on-site. Former Councilor Pat McMahon is here. This was his baby, as he was on council. And we tried to get this done in December for his last meeting, but we didn't quite make it. So I'd just like to thank Pat for your help on this with me for the last couple of years on the project.
Do we have any questions?
Mayor, I'd like to move to authorize city administrator beds to sign the CCNRs and grant the right of entry for the Rainierson Natural Area property.
No second.
Motion was made by Counselor Reisner and seconded by Counselor Tracy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. Next item is number 10, Updated Oak Lodge Water Service District, OLWDS, Sanitary Sewer Agreement and Ordinance 1494, Amendments to Gladstone Municipal Code, also called the GMC, Chapter 1, 3.12.040, Connection Fee Designation.
So I'm gonna take the lead on this one as well. Two separate matters here, but they are definitely related. So the first thing is an agreement that we have put together with Oak Lodge. And what this really is trying to do is, as best we can, marry and sort of have an update to what the kind of current practices are of the city, relative to, and I chuckle, because it's from 1971, and it's titled an interim agreement. So this was meant to be something that would have blossomed into something much bigger a lot, a long, long time ago. But it is still the agreement that governs the relationship between the parties. We had an issue that came up recently. The city was involved, developer of some single-family homes challenged, sued the city and sued Oak Lodge, claiming that the, essentially, the fees that they were assessed were not legally assessed. And so we went through that and got the claims settled. But in doing that, we realized that, you know, there are some, I guess, just sort of deficiencies, for lack of a better word, in the interim agreement, that kind of call out for a little more clarity. And, you know, that would all be taken care of. What we hope to do is, within no later than the next year, bring back to the council a, what should have been the successor to this, a brand-new, holistic agreement with Oak Lodge Water Services. For now, what we're proposing to do is have this agreement that essentially clarifies and implements the interim agreement. And so really, I guess the two things there that are not changes, again, they're really just sort of taking what is currently happening and making that clear from, you know, an actual, in an actual agreement, is, number one, there's a monthly service charge that the city pays to Oak Lodge to treat sewage, that comes from houses in the city that ultimately end up at the Oak Lodge Treatment Plant. And in the interim agreement, that was gonna be $2 a month per household. As you might imagine, that number has increased over the years. It's now $38 and change, I think $38.04. So that wasn't clear at all from this, in terms of how did the increase happen? But I know that, you know, things just occur, and people do their jobs, and that's what the city's been doing currently. So this agreement will make that clear in terms of, okay, Oak Lodge, you're doing this, we're acknowledging that you have this fee, we are passing it on to our, well, ultimately, passing it on to Oak Lodge from our residents, and give some language about how they will notify us if there's gonna be a change in that fee, and just to allow for more coordination that way. The other piece that's addressed in the interim agreement, but is also really not all that clear, is what happens when a new house or a new home is built, that's ultimately gonna be wheeling sewage to Oak Lodge. That was really what kind of spurred the lawsuit that happened recently. And what we've done here is try to clarify that Oak Lodge has a hookup fee. It's listed in their schedule of rates and charges. And that, that fee that they list will be the fee that a new home builder or a new homeowner would pay, a one-time fee, a hookup fee, to us, and that we would remit that to Oak Lodge. And that piece of it, in terms of how the fee would be paid, is the subject of the ordinance that follows the agreement. And I guess I'll talk about that now, 'cause it just, it makes some sense to do so. The only thing the ordinance does is clarify, the folks for the hookup fee were always paying the hookup fee, it was a matter of who they were paying it to. And with your other, so the city doesn't treat any of its own sewer, it does vet through different providers. And if you were in Tri-City Sewer District or you were in CCSD, if your home was subject to those treatment providers, then the code says that you pay the city a fee, and the city remits that to those providers. For whatever reason, Oak Lodge was different, and what we were requiring for most of that time was that the individual go pay the hookup fee at Oak Lodge and then present us with a receipt. That sort of changed in recent years, where people were paying us directly, and we were remitting it. So again, the code change is really just to sort of be consistent with what the practice is right now. And that would be that they pay us that hookup fee, and then we pay Oak Lodge.
Okay. So you want these to, as two separate motions?
Separate, correct. Yeah, a motion to, I guess, a motion to approve the agreement, or obviously, questions, talk about those. And then we would have a separate reading of the ordinance and any questions you would have about that.
Okay. Any discussion, any questions? All right. Would someone like to make a motion for A, considering approving the sanitary sewer agreement?
Mayor, I would like to make a motion for A, approves the sanitary sewer agreement between the City of Gladstone and OLWST.
Is there a second?
No second.
Motion was made by Counselor Mercero, seconded by Counselor Tracy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Next is considering approving Ordinance 1494. So this, since it's an ordinance, do we do the first and second reading on this one? Okay.
If the first reading is unanimous, then you can do the second.
Yeah, right. Would someone like to make a motion, please?
I will go ahead and make a motion to approve Ordinance 1494, amending Chapter 13.12.040 of the GMC Connection Fees.
No second.
Motion was made by Counselor Mercero, seconded by Counselor Tracy. Any further discussion? Tammy, could you please call the roll? Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Neese?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Yes.
Counselor Reisner?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Mercero?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple?
Yes.
So would you like to have the second reading?
Yes, please.
Okay. I'll do the second reading.
Yes, please.
An ordinance amending Chapter 13.12.040 of the Gladstone Municipal Code.
We don't need a motion on this one.
Yeah, then just do a motion to adopt second reading.
Okay. Someone make a motion to adopt the second reading?
I'll make a motion.
I'm gonna do it. I make a motion to adopt the second reading.
Good job.
All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion was made by Counselor...
Seconded by Counselor Neese.
Any further discussion?
Actually, Mayor, can we reiterate cost impact in the staff report for the public that's here at the meeting? There is no cost impact to approving both items.
There you go.
Thank you.
All right. Tammy, could you call the roll, please? Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Neese?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Yes.
Counselor Reisner?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Mercero?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple?
Yes. Passed. All right. It's been a long meeting so far. It's 8:30. Does anyone want to take a quick break? Yes. So we're gonna take a five-minute break, so we'll be back at 8:35. Good for you. All right, so we're...
I'll try that as a...
We're opening the meeting back up at eight, I can't see that far, 8:38 PM. All right, next item is number 11, Appointments to City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The first is the Audit Committee. We have two applications received for one position. Any discussion? I think we'll have the city recorder just ask each of you your choices like we did at the last appointment process.
All right. Would anyone like to say anything about any of the candidates?
Well, I know Christie from the food pantry. She's amazing, lots of energy. Looks like she's been in the financial industry for 35 years. And her, I know her father was really involved with seaside city government for a lot of years, so she's been around that for her whole life, basically.
Mayor Stimple, is she here this evening?
No, she was injured at the food pantry, so she's not here.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that.
That's rough work.
Yep.
That's her duty.
She fell hard. Anyway, so Tammy, yes, could you please call?
Mayor Stimple.
Christie.
Counselor Ripley?
Neese.
Counselor Neese?
Christie.
Counselor Tracy?
Christie.
Counselor Reisner?
Christie.
Counselor Todd?
Christie.
Counselor Mercero?
Christie.
All right. Christie, congratulations, though you're not here. The next is Budget Committee, three applications received for three positions. So, staff, we have some options on this one. We can go for all three, we can just choose one or two, and leave it open. It's our choice.
And so one thing I'd point out is the, I took a look at this before the meeting. So the statute talks about the composition of a budget committee in the budget law. And it says that the budget committee shall consist of the members of the governing body shall, and a number equal to the number of members of the governing body of electors of the municipal corporation appointed by the governing body. If there are fewer, if there are electors fewer than the number required, the governing body and the electors who are willing to serve shall be the budget committee. If there are no electors willing to serve, the governing body shall be the budget committee.
So we can have less than seven?
Yeah, it's a very unclearly-worded statute, unfortunately. It talks about this willing-to-serve piece as well. It doesn't seem to say that it should be, has to be, seven and seven in your case. But that's, you know, that's possible, because it does talk about the fact that you'd have an equal number, depending on how many councilors you have. So if you had five, it'd be five. You have seven, it'd be seven.
Okay, so we come to that majority ruling that we discussed at the last meeting. What, we have three people, and what if there isn't one that gets four? Do we just choose the top? How do we do this?
Yeah, I would, well, I think you could choose the top, anybody, yes, so good question. You'd need, anybody to get appointed, since you have all seven of you here, will need to get four votes.
Okay.
And if someone failed to get four, I think you'd have an option of leaving it open. I think there's a somewhat of a question of whether, you know, this willingness-to-serv language, I'd probably want to look at that a little bit more. You could try to get another applicant. I know you've been doing that for a while.
Yeah.
So, but yeah, they still have to receive a majority of votes either way.
Okay, so they have to have four votes.
Right.
All right. Any more questions? I know I had all the questions. All right, Tammy, could you call? Roll? Mayor Stimple. Garlandton and Haller Schaefer. Counselor Ripley?
I think since there's three open positions, and there's three people from the community, I'll go for all three of them.
Counselor Neese?
Mindy Garlandton.
Counselor Tracy?
Mindy Garlandton.
Counselor Reisner?
I'm gonna go with Garlandton and Haller Schaefer.
Yeah.
Counselor Todd?
Yes, on all three.
Counselor Mercero?
All three.
All right, so we have seven for Garlandton, five for Haller Schaefer, and three for Johnson. So needing the four, then those two would be appointed.
Those two are appointed, correct.
And then we leave the other position open.
And I think you just make a decision, and I can take a little bit more of a look if you want me to, but either to leave it open, which I think is, you know, somewhat of a question in my mind, but you need to have, you need to have somebody that has also been appointed with majority vote, so there's a tension there.
Okay, so then we'll just, I guess, advise us in the interim, and if we have to, bring it up at the next meeting, then we will.
Before we move on, though, one other question I have is that we have the, one of the openings has a longer term than the other two. Am I correct?
Yeah, in the proposal, there's two different expiration dates.
Okay, so then the one with the most votes would get the longest, is that right?
Sure.
Yeah.
I think that's a fair way to do it.
That's what we've done in the past.
Yeah, that's how we've done it in the past.
I was looking too.
Okay, perfect. All right, so the next is the Library Advisory Board. We have one applicant for one position. And I believe the applicant is here, in the back, right? Any questions? So with this appointment, how many people then do we have on the Library Advisory Board? Is that seven, or does this bring us to five?
We currently have six.
So this brings us to seven, okay. Which is where we want to be. All right, Tammy, could you call the roll, please? Mayor Stimple?
Coulson.
Counselor Ripley?
No.
Counselor Neese?
No.
Counselor Tracy?
Dr. Coulson.
Counselor Reisner?
Coulson.
Counselor Todd?
Dr. Coulson.
Counselor Mercero?
No vote.
All right, so you got four votes, so congratulations, you're on the Library Advisory Board. And the last one is Planning Commission. We have three applicants for one position. And I just wanted to say something really quick on Claire. I believe that moving forward, the Planning Commission is no longer gonna be an easy place to sit. There's gonna be a lot of contentious decisions. We need folks that will spend the time to be informed, weigh what's best for the city as a whole, but still temper it with compassion. And I know that Claire could absolutely do that. So would you call the roll, please? Mayor Stimple?
Coy.
Counselor Ripley?
Les Paul.
Counselor Neese?
Les Paul.
Counselor Tracy?
Les Paul.
Counselor Reisner?
Ms. Coy.
Counselor Todd?
Les Paul.
Counselor Mercero?
Counselor Mercero?
Les Paul.
All right, congratulations, you're on planning again. And I think that's it for the appointments for Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Next item is twelve City Council Liaison Appointments. In the past, what I've done is I've asked the counselors where they choose to be, and I've asked the committees and boards who they would like to work with. And since we have quite a few new people on the Boards and Commissions, and we haven't had our volunteer orientation, if it's all right with you guys, I'd like to hold this off until next month so that I have an opportunity to hear back from those folks. And by then, Counselor Todd and Counselor Ripley might have a little bit better idea of where they might, might fit.
Mayor, can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
The liaison issue has been a discussion for quite a while. Whether there should be liaisons or not liaisons is a question by many cities. A lot of cities don't have any liaisons. I'm in favor of liaisons, myself. But I think this might be a good subject at our strategic planning meeting to what we really want to do with liaisons, and if we want liaisons, or what their purpose is, or whatever, and just talk about that. And then possibly with your input you've gotten from people, then to decide whether we assign people or don't assign people.
Perfect, nope, absolutely, we'll add that to the agenda. Jack and I are meeting week after, next week?
Couple of weeks, yes.
To go over the agenda, so we'll make sure we get that added. Perfect. All right, next is Business Carried Forward. Do we have anything?
I have nothing, thank you.
And we follow that with Business from the Audience?
We do have some.
Okay, and we're gonna limit it to three minutes. Go ahead.
Bill Osburn?
I want to welcome, congratulate the new members on the council, and welcome back those returning. I hear the term "Mayberry" being used frequently to describe Gladstone. In Mayberry, people cared about each other, as do many in our little community, and it's also a small town. The similarities stop there. I'm not shy of confronting those who have sworn to service with issues we the people have, or pointed out when you dishonor the position, or misuse your authority. Those who actually know me know that I do my research and focus on the facts. This takes time and does help to weed out some issues along the way that prove not to be accurate before making them public. I want to thank you for rewriting the rules. Four of you who are running, and a fifth helping the campaign, worked to put together, either put together a website, promoted it, or sanctioned it by your silence. This site and the new rules you supported state that facts don't matter, and the truth is no longer a boundary to be concerned with. According to the new rules you adopted, not only are the people you wish to shed light on targets, so are their family members, living or dead. My father, mother, grandmother, sister, and I believe at least one of my children were used to attack me in your grab for power. My divorce, seventy-two years before my birth, my second at fifteen, passed your test, is true. Litigation at age twelve was also listed as one of my numerous court cases, along with the felony conviction that does not exist in the real world. Counselor Todd even defended the site on social media, along with her close supporters. Some of those names were just as fake as their profiles. This was no surprise, as it was her friends that aggressively promoted the site while trying to remove anyone from social media who questioned it. This speaks volumes to where your morals lay. This election is one for the history books. One of you on the council is under criminal investigation. One of you elected may not be qualified because of an act of fraud. Some of you want to focus on the positive and ignore the negative. Some of the same individuals keep violating our trust and the law. It's easy for devious people to want to overlook immoral actions, more so when they're your own. As I've stated before, we expect you to set a good example for us to follow. None of this represents Mayberry or the ideals of a small town. You have an opportunity to change that if you choose to. I'll admit, I'm not optimistic, but I would love for you to prove me wrong. With that being said, I wish everyone a Happy New Year, and I hope we can move forward to a brighter, better Gladstone. And hopefully, a year I can focus more on the positive than the negative, because despite how you might think, I'd rather get up here and say good things than ramble on about other issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next?
Andrew Lavanti?
Hi, folks, thank you. I'm Andrew Lavanti. I've had an opportunity to speak with some of you regarding the, on a lighter note, I suppose. Improving traffic safety at Max Patterson Park, proposal for four-way stops at Exeter. May I hand out a little flyer? Is that okay?
Sure. Thank you.
Thanks.
If you want, we can just hand it around, because you-
Oh, that works.
Yeah. You got three minutes.
So, it's my belief, in having positive conversations with many folks up here now, that, you know, an easy fix to improve traffic safety for students, certainly in Gladstone, children, folks who own the John Wetton School, would be to implement four-way stops. I don't believe it's gonna be a crazy expense. I am a member of the Traffic Safety Commission. I come representing myself, not the board necessarily. We have a meeting late January for that. And I am gonna be out of town, so I wanted to address it aggressively. I feel it's an important thing. I think it's an easy fix. I think we should really think about trying to do it before this great park opens up. What you see in that packet in front of you, the proposal, where the stop signs are, one of the somewhat troubling images, or that street view on that first page, talking about speed limits in that area, about twenty-five miles per hour. That brings our stopping distance to about a hundred and twenty-five feet. That means a driver's stopping distance at that point puts you into numerous park facilities, including the showers, the shed, where some of the summertime city employees work, and some benches there. That's probably the most dangerous four-way, but I'd say that certainly on Exeter, it'd be the same type of ballgame there. I believe at other parks in the town, we have playgrounds, we've got four-way stops adjacent to those parks, whether it's Valley View, which would be the Rick Shannon, I believe, and also way over in the next town over, but at the Candy Lane, we've got a four-way stop near that playground. I think it makes the, you know, our parks a little more cohesive with our traffic safety. I think it's important, and I believe anyone driving through there would agree that there's a bit of an issue, especially when you've got dozens of children, certainly dozens upon dozens in the summertime. So, I want to address the council, see if this is something that you generally get support for, and to figure out how we can move forward to just get a couple more stop signs. I would, as you see in the second page, there's two different types of stop signs there. I happen to be from Cornell University, who's got interesting stuff on traffic safety. I would encourage the stop sign with the full reflective, the vertical red reflective, and that this would be a change to a standard traffic area, and we'd want to add more attention to any changes in that area.
Okay, well, your time's up, but after the Business from the Audience, I would like to just bring this up briefly, to see what our next steps are.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Bob Everett?
Good evening, Bob Everett, Gladstone, and I'll be quick, because it's almost my bedtime. First, I want to say, Jackie, I like you two, even though I'm a Beaver, okay? So, despite what John said. And I also agree with the four-way stops. I think it would be a great idea. And I want to welcome the new council members, and good luck. But I'm really here for downtown. I think most of you know my passion, has been downtown, the downtown Portland Avenue area, has been for a long time. I do hope that we move forward in some way. I'm certainly, I'm certainly willing to be a part of that process, and would love to be included in that, and I hope that there will be inclusion, I'm sure there will be, of a number of the businesses around. I commented to Matt that I, too, would hate to see mom-and-pop sort of things disappear, and I think the inclusion of a number of the businesses, and making sure that the people that do own the businesses and/or run the businesses down on Portland Avenue would want to be a part of that in order to make sure that this type, that type of thing doesn't necessarily happen. I know a lot of the things that, whether it's code changes or controversial, a lot of discussion, I've heard all that before, but I feel that we have to move on. When you talk about blight, house across the street from me is blight. That's how I feel, that's how I've always felt, ever since I've been there for almost thirty years. So, I do hope that in some way or shape, we do move forward with this, and that we have a number of the people upon Gladstone, upon Portland Avenue, included in it, too. And I'd love to help out in whatever way, anyway.
So, we have it on record that he's volunteering-
Yes, I am.
-to be on this Main Street group, so, there we go. Please? We need your signature, so don't go anywhere. In blood, yeah, pound of flesh. Next?
Last one, Kelly Chaney?
Hi, my name's Kelly, some of you know me. I was K through twelve Gladstone, and came back years ago to raise my daughter here. I didn't intend on addressing the council tonight, but I heard some of the comments from both sides on the affordable housing and homeless problem, and I just thought maybe I could offer a shift in some thinking. I heard those people, these people, and us.
Yeah.
A lot, by both sides.
Thank you, thank you.
And my mom, who also lived in Gladstone her entire life, grown life, she had a couple houses here, and she got divorced, suffered a disability, and started renting. And because there was a family friend that owned a house here, she, her rent was like eight hundred dollars a month for years. She got really sick, couldn't afford that because she had medication and treatment issues. So, we squeezed her in up at our house, my daughter and I. But had it not been for that, she could be one of the statistics we're talking about. And she did pass away this year, and I tried to get so much assistance, but because she had worked all of her life and paid taxes, her social security was too high at twelve ninety a month. Another friend of mine, K through twelve Gladstone, she works two jobs. Her youngest of three just graduated three, four years ago. Also some health issues, also a divorce, there's a theme here. And she cannot afford her rent on Clarendon, so she's going to move up to Camas to live with her sister. And she was voted most likely to succeed in our class. And now, she's leaving the community because the rent is too high. I've owned two houses in Gladstone, but because of a divorce, there we go again with that. I'm now renting, and I make a decent wage, I'm on the right side of the statistics, but my housing is over fifty percent of my income, and as a single mom, it's really, really tough. And I think about the lady talking about her frightening encounter, and that guy might have just been looking for somewhere warm to sleep, and had there been a place, he might have gone there. Had my mom and my friend not had relatives take them in, they may have been the ones checking car doors to get a warm place to sleep. So, maybe we can just have a little shift on the us and them, because it's us. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Next?
That's it?
That's it. All right, so the one thing I wanted to bring up on the four-way stop, what do we have to do to get that put in? Do we need to bring it back to council and have a motion, or what do we need to do?
I think it was, and I'm not sure, but I think it went through the Parks Group, the Traffic Safety Group, and now it's come before you, and if that's the direction that you give us.
Do we need to have a motion next meeting, or can we decide something tonight?
To give us direction to work on that now.
You don't, you just need consensus, you don't necessarily need a motion.
Yeah, and then if there's a more formal process, I can let you know what that is.
Okay.
I don't know why it went to the Parks Board, actually.
Because it's Parks, it's really, it's around the park.
It did, so, yeah.
Yeah. So, let's, Counselor Ripley, what do you think?
I think it would be a lot better to stop than hit a kid.
Yeah. Counselor Neese?
Yes, I'm for it.
Counselor Tracy?
I would support it.
Counselor Reisner?
Oh, definitely, because I believe the next intersection to the south is a four-way.
On Exeter, you have one further down, I believe, it would be-
Down by the fire station.
So, we'd have two-way stops in the northern part of the park area, if you could call it. So, but there is a four-way stop, the intersection next to John Wetton.
Yeah.
Exeter.
Okay.
Yeah. Counselor Todd?
Sure, okay, but yeah, I'm for it.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Mercero?
Yeah, I support that a hundred percent.
Mayor Stimple, yes, a hundred percent, so there we go.
Thank you for-
Yeah, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
For sure.
Okay, next is Business from the Council, so I'm gonna start, Counselor Mercero.
I hope everybody is having a good New Year, and other than saying that, I don't have anything else.
Counselor Todd?
I just want to thank everybody for welcoming me, and, you know, it's a learning curve, and I'm gonna do my best, and I love Gladstone, and I'm gonna just help any way that I can.
Wonderful. Counselor Reisner?
Beat me to it, I was gonna say, welcome you aboard.
Thank you.
And also, Counselor Ripley, look forward to working with you guys.
Counselor Tracy?
I do have one thing. Is it Kelly, is it Chaney?
Chaney.
Chaney, I'm sorry. Thank you for bringing that up. This is a new day. We're seeing things that are very different. People are put out of their houses by circumstances outside of their control, and when we see, say, these people, these people, we're missing the point here.
Yeah.
It's all of us. And so, I appreciate you bringing it up. I felt that at the time, we've got to change this narrative, so we need citizens like you to come to us and say, you know, I think we were all, I was definitely recoiling. I think the rest of us were thinking about the way that the terminology was being used. That is not the narrative we use going forward. It will not solve this problem. It won't solve it at a community level, this localized like ours, nor at a national level. So, I really do appreciate you bringing it up, and I thank you for circling back. And yes, you are correct, we need to look at it in a different way.
Yes, absolutely. Counselor Neese?
I concur with what Counselor Tracy had to say, and with Mr. Osborne's outlook, and I'm sorry he feels that way, but, you know, it's a new year, it's a new day. It's time for us to come together, work together, and move forward. And I feel that we can do this with this council and with who's here. And I look forward to working with all of you. And I look for the positive in 2019, because we're moving forward, and we got lots of things to plan and things to do. And we're gonna do it together.
Counselor Ripley? All right, I have, number one, I'll piggyback off you. The Happiness Advantage, it's the new book that I'm reading, and it's awesome. Everybody should read it. It will change the way you deal with people and everything else in your life. I wanted to thank everyone who showed up for Senator Jeff Merkley's Town Hall meeting, held at Gladstone High School last week. Counselor Tracy and Counselor Todd were there, along with a few members of our Boards and Committees. It was a great opportunity to hear what his agenda is, even though everything's at a standstill, and the agenda is kind of like crazy chaos right now. What I did discover is he's a very approachable man, so if anybody has any questions or concerns, he has local representation, and I'm sure he'd be more than happy to hear what you had to say. So, that's all that I have. Would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
No, second.
Motion was made by Counselor Neese and seconded by Counselor Reisner. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned at nine oh six PM.